Thanks for joining us for the McMinnville School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Alex Baumhardt, I'm a journalist at a nonprofit news site based in Salem called the Oregon Capital Chronicle. To start, I want to thank the sponsors that put this all together and created the questions that I'll be asking all the candidates. And I want to tell you a little bit about each sponsor. Before I do, just a reminder that this is being filmed and streamed online. And there are restrooms in that back corner if you need, and translation over here if you need. So, to begin, the sponsors, we have the National Alliance on Mental Illness, provides advocacy, education, support, and public awareness so that all individuals and families affected by mental illness can build better lives. We have the Oregon Public Education Network, a nonprofit advocacy alliance of educators, parents, and education advocates working together to further affect, to further effective public education for all Oregon students. Our purpose is to protect, preserve, promote, and improve public education for all Oregon students. We share information on critical issues and support each other in actions which have positive effects on our public schools that are currently threatened. UNIDOS works to promote the integration, participation, representation, and success of Latinx individuals and families in Yam Hill County, and to build bridges of understanding and support among Latinx and non-Latinx people. The work of UNIDOS is accomplished through education, policy, and community advocacy, immigration support, leadership development in an environment where collaboration and relationship building is essential. And lastly, Cycle Yam Hill County's mission is to promote cycling as a means of enhancing community engagement and promoting healthy lifestyles. Through educational programs, outdoor recreation projects, public events, and advocacy work, we aim to create a more connected, healthy, and sustainable community throughout, through the power of cycling. So with that, thank you sponsors, and I'm going to turn it over to the candidates to introduce themselves, about a minute apiece. And Larry, maybe we'll start with you and come down the line this way, if that's okay.
My name is Larry Volmer. I'm a husband, father, volunteer, missionary, brother, manager, and a son. As with, as with most, I am many things to many different people. I began my volunteer service with McMinnville School District by serving on, as a budget committee member, and did so for five years. Shortly thereafter, I was appointed to fill a vacancy on the school board in the spring of 2006. Since then, I have consistently run for reelection so I can continue to serve the students of this district. I choose to serve in this capacity because I am the beneficiary of service others provided while I was a student. As a child, by most measures, my family was poor and had little extra for activities and experiences during my youth. Several adults unknown to me served on school boards to ensure children had the best opportunities possible. Those efforts made all the difference for me to rise above my circumstances and be able to serve the deserving children. I cannot think of a better way to give back.
Hello, I'm Anita Humley. I have almost 20 years of experience working with and involvement with student education. I'm running for the McMinnville School Board to help students gain confidence, to empower them to achieve greater academic results, and prepare them for college or other vocational traits. I want all of our students to become responsible, respectful, and resourceful adults. I want parents to feel confident in their kids' education. Parents can be huge advocates in the teaching process if they have more information about the topics children are learning in school. They can reinforce the learning at home and step up into the classroom to volunteer a lot more readily. Parent and teacher partnerships are a huge benefit to all our students. Curriculum transparency is very important. We need to make sure that our students get the best education possible and learn healthy ways to alleviate stress. That's why I'm running for the McMinnville School Board.
Great, thank you. Gerardo?
Okay, thank you. My name is Gerardo Partida, I was born in the group in Encinaloa, in the state of Northern California, Mexico. They're a little town, Campo Henal, it's a 45-mile island from the Gulf of California. The town is named for Garrison de Glasham, the important general who lived in the area from about 1890 to 1910. I earned my degree in marine science in 1986, and the Marine Fisheries School in Encinaloa State, Mexico. And I spent four years working for the, my own university in the Fisheries Investigation Field. I am the 30th youngest of nine brothers and one sister, father of three, my oldest son, Jesús, my daughter Janet, and my youngest son, Sebastian. I got married, my wife, Regina, in 1989. Why do I'm running for the school board? My passion for a better qualified education for students started when I was eight years old. Attending to elementary and middle school with limited resources made me think about the type of education our next generation is going to receive. I'm running for the school board because I want to be sure that all and every one of the students attending to our school district receive the best qualified education to become a good citizens in our, in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Gerardo, I'm sorry I mispronounced your name there.
No, that's okay.
I'll have it correct from here on out. Audrey?
I'm Audrey Ossie. I have been living in McMinnville for 30 years. I myself attended K-12 in the McMinnville School District. I graduated back high in 2006, and shortly after that, I went to beauty school, Academy of Hair Design, graduated in 2009. I have since been doing hair as a self-employed hairdresser for 14 years. Now I own my own business for four years. I have two children who are now starting their journey in the school district. So I'm running for school work because I just have a very strong passion for children's education and their basic well-being. I've been paying very close attention to the public school system across the country and in Oregon, and it's just not where they should be. So Oregon is failing our students academically and mental health-wise, and I don't want our community to fall behind as well. So, I believe academic achievement should stay at the top of priorities, and students should be held accountable for their work and their behavior. And I just, I want to volunteer my time to be a helpful and informed member of the board.
Thank you, and Luann?
That would be me. Hello, I'm Luann Anderson. I was born and raised in Tucko, New York. My sisters and I lived with my maternal grandparents in a big extended Italian family. In 1976, I met my husband Mickey. We married and immediately became a blended family that now includes our three children, four grandchildren, and six great-grandchildren. You heard that right. I'm the first one to graduate college in my family. I really enjoy traveling and spending time with family and friends. I'm semi-retired and currently work part-time as a research assistant for Portland State University. I also continue to work as an education consultant. I'm running for the McMinnville School Board because I'm eager to be part of the decision-maker who set policy that ensures all students have access to and receive a high-quality, comprehensive education experience that does include extracurricular and sports activities. I have firsthand experience as an educational assistant, teacher, and administrator, as well as a former board member in a neighboring district that I believe would be an asset to being a board member. Thank you.
Thank you, and Todd?
Hi, I'm Todd Hyder. I was born and raised in McMinnville. My parents were both employed in McMinnville School District. My mom Sandy was a classified staff member for over 30 years between Nuvi and Columbus, and my dad Mark was a teacher and administrator for over 20 years in the district. After graduating from McMinnville High School in 1994, spent the next four years attending Villanova University and graduated as a political science major with a business minor. Went on to attend Temple University's School of Dentistry and graduated in 2004. And in 2004 is when we made the decision to return home. I've been the owner of Hyder Family Dentistry for the past 19 years. I've been married to my wife Ashley for 22 years and I have three amazing children. My oldest daughter Laney just graduated from McMinnville High School last year and is currently a freshman in college. My son Cameron's a freshman in McMinnville High School, and my youngest daughter Addison is in her last year of elementary school memorial. Why am I running for school board? Kids. As parents, we want our kids to have opportunities inside and outside the classroom to help prepare them for their future. We have amazing district employees. They're dedicated to helping prepare our kids for their future success. I think our job as a school member should just be to listen and work together with our employees, parents, and students, and do what's best for our kids. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Shelly?
All right, I am a licensed marriage and family therapist who, I received my master's degree from George Fox University. I currently work at Head Start as the mental health specialist, and I serve kids from zero to five in, all over the county. I am married to my husband, Betel Reyes, who is born and raised in Mexico. We have four bilingual children, ages seven, 10, 10, and 12. Yes, that means I have twins. Living in a bicultural house, it really helps me to understand and embrace cultural differences in our community. Betel and I have lived here in McMinnville for the past nine years. I have a passion for children's mental health, and I want to share that, my passion and skills, with student staff and parents and McMinnville School Districts. I want to be on the school board to bring a voice for the mental health needs of our students and collaborate with the community to find creative solutions to the problems that are facing our kids today. I know that the school board is a team, right? There's seven of us that will be able to make, make decisions, and each person brings their own expertise and perspectives to the table. And I just want to bring my mental health perspective to the table to support both staff and students.
Great, thank you. And Doris?
All right. Hi, I'm Doris Towery. I am the proud mom of two MHS graduates. I am myself a first-generation college graduate with a degree in speech communication from Indiana University. I have to say "Go IU" to my IU friends. I bring more than 20 years of executive leadership experience in the nonprofit arena. And before my time in nonprofits, I was a newspaper publisher in small community newspapers around the country. I have loved living in McMinnville for the last six years of our life, when we moved from Springfield, where we had been for 17 years before that. I currently serve on the Willamette Valley Cancer Foundation Board. I am on the McMinnville Rotary Board. I've been a smart reader, one of my favorite volunteer jobs that I've ever had, and just recently joined the Leadership Council for a family place. Kids are a passion of mine and always have been, in helping them to be successful. I'm running because I believe that a high-quality public education has the power to transform lives. And I have experienced that firsthand because I'm the product of a good quality public education. I believe that success in our schools depends on encouraging people from different backgrounds and perspectives and views and strengths to collaborate and to create opportunities for all of our students in our school district. As a school board member, I will work tirelessly to build on the achievements of our amazing McMinnville School District, and will advocate to ensure opportunities are available for all of our students with a focus on diversity, inclusion, and building a path to success for all of our kids.
Great, thank you all. So, before we begin, I will go through some ground rules. Bear with me here, finding myself on paper. So in general, everyone here, if you can keep an open mind, be open to learning something new, be respectful of the person speaking. All questions were developed by forum sponsors and have been submitted to candidates prior to this forum, so there won't be an opportunity tonight for public questions, but hopefully you all can talk later, and if anybody here has questions, maybe they can ask you. To keep the forum moving, I'll guide the discussion, I'll recognize each candidate prior to their response. Candidates, you'll have a maximum of two minutes to respond. Adam here will point, yeah, he's, he's going to let you know you have 30 seconds remaining. If you could, stay focused on the question asked at the time. And we just asked that nobody interrupts the discussion or the person speaking. And I think that's it. So with that, maybe we'll get started. If it works for you all, we'll start down the line and then sort of chain. So the first question, we'll start with you Larry, and then the second question, we'll start with you Anita, so on and so forth. And thanks so much again for letting everybody get to know you and everybody here for being here. So to begin, and if anybody needs me to repeat the question too, let me know. To begin, and Larry, we'll start with you again. What is your understanding of McMinnville School District's equity, diversity, and inclusion practices? And what is your position on those practices?
It's, I got, it's a several-fold question. What I currently understand is equity and diversity has been a growing and expansive request and need within our school districts, not just within McMinnville, but with the state of Oregon. We currently have hired a Director of Equity and Inclusion. So what does that mean? Equity and diversity are a key focus within the McMinnville School District. Practices are constantly reviewed and modified, and if necessary, changed, so that students are active participants in a well-rounded and inclusive educational experience. We've created that new director to help oversee that, and that director digs into everything from teaching practices to policies, to how stuff is delivered, how, to try to make sure that all students can be recognized, can fit, and have a place to call their own. And I think McMinnville is doing that very, very, very well. Not by comparison, because it's a fairly new standard and a fairly new overarching request coming from ODE and the state. And our, our access to that and our ability to address that is being done with several managers, starting with someone that's fully responsible for equity and diversity of all kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anita?
I am very pleased to see the diversity in our population and the inclusion that I saw within the district when I worked at Nuvi. We had a large Hispanic population, and it was great to see the culture displayed through various programs within the school, and also presented to the community through language arts, books, games, events, and cultural dance, called Ballet for Culco, I'm hard at pronouncing that. But it was so beautiful to see the culture in, displayed in the dance, in the rhythm, and just out in the schools and provided in the community as well. I love that. These opportunities help students gain self-confidence, share their culture, and feel accepted within our school and in our community. Diversity and inclusion are wonderful, but equity can cause a lot of division within our student population if it's set up as an oppressor and oppressed. One group will be, will have to give up quality to arrive at the same place at the end. Equality is much better because it provides resources equally. We should always strive to create a peaceful environment for our students to feel safe, to be valued in school. We should always avoid creating division or any type of separation in our schools or anywhere else in our community. Thank you.
Thanks, and Gerardo?
Okay, I want to try to, my best, I got the wrong information, but I try. Okay, for me, the equity, the inclusion, and diversity, that's mainly, for me, that's really important for us. And I believe the school district is doing a really good job with one of the, the first question I asked, when I were trying to hire the superintendent, the new superintendent, we tried to work on this and focus on that. And then we did, I believe this, we did a good job, and then our district doing really good right now. We just hired last year the Equity and Inclusion Director, and then we have a, a new director of the Family Engagement. And then this, we're doing really, but the focus on this is, is just try to integrate the whole community, is maybe part of the, the school district, and then making the, anybody coming to the school district, yes, students, staff, or anybody can work in the school district, they feel welcome. That's for me, that's equity, and then inclusion, include everybody. So that means everybody, we're united, we're one community, and then everybody should be welcome to our school district. And then, well, again, our district is really doing good right now. Hopefully, we continue doing that for, for better outcomes in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to be completely honest here. I grew up in a household that didn't have to tell me to include everybody, that was just, that goes without saying. So DEI was formulated for the workplace originally, and it has infiltrated into the colleges, where I truly believe that's where it should stay. The second you start telling children that we're different, they start seeing it. We accept everybody. We should always, go without saying. DEI can be a bit of a distraction for some children. They start seeing a division, and it kind of creates a division. For the staff that has to go through the training, it can be kind of offensive, because basically you're telling them they don't know how to be a good person. These are adults we're talking about, they know how to be nice, kind, accepting people. There's happened studies on DEI that in fact, the outcomes aren't always positive, and sometimes they're negative, and that means that it does create division, divides. So, I just wish we could accept and be kind to everybody without having to talk about it.
Great. Luann?
So, equity to me is about access, and I'm going to put my special education hat on here. I've spent my, oh, virtually my entire career working with students with disabilities. So when I look at that student population, and now I also volunteer as a board member for NV Advancements and working with adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities, I can see firsthand throughout the course of the years that I've been in education, how our society has changed to become more inclusive of people who are different than us. And because we're different doesn't mean that we don't have a role or a voice in our community or in our schools. It just means we bring a different role and a different voice to the community. And when we look at each other and accept each other and value each other for who we are and what we bring to the table, then we can truly get to, I think, what the spirit is of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because once we have a role and a place at the table for everybody, then we all benefit. We are not diminished because somebody is less than or different than. We are all enhanced because we are coming to the table. And I think at the school door, when children come in the door, that's how we take them. How they come in the building is who they are, and we have to take them and bring them in and educate them and love them and care for them. And so it matters not what the color of their skin is, because you're right, you have to be carefully taught. But when you're in the school setting, access and equity to programs that everybody can have access to and benefit from is where I stand on that DEI position. Thank you.
Todd, go for it.
My son told me not to say anything stupid, so here goes. So, I'm going to take the mission statement of the district on this one. So, "McMinnville School District will honor, empower, and prepare each individual to thrive and contribute." Now, the words "each individual" is kind of what I want to focus on. So, we all come from diverse backgrounds, experiences, have different voices, ideas, and skill sets that make us unique. But I think our focus needs to be on just treating others with respect, and just really take the time to just listen and understand people, and then that way, that just brings a better culture of understanding, which I think obviously the world needs a little bit more of today. I know from the district standpoint, like Larry and Gerardo mentioned, in June, they hired a new DEI director, and they implemented the, what's called the Educational Equity Policy. Basically, the role of the board and the superintendent is to kind of guide and oversee the actions. Also, that is like a series of checks and balances, so there's not too far overreaching one way or the other, and, you know, if elected, I'm sure that hopefully all of us will be an advocate for that and continue that great work. So, that's it.
Great. Shelly?
Yeah, well, I also found out that there's an equity, diversity, inclusion person working at the school district. I didn't know that before, so that was awesome to find out. And I would love to talk with her about, like, what that, what's happening in our schools currently, and what her involvement is, and what practices she's got planned. But I believe in creating a culture of community and respect and kindness to each other, right? It's important to create a school family where we can love each other and have, right, disagreements, but still talk to each other and still have meals together and still play together and hang out together, right? That's what diversity and inclusion is to me. And when we can create school families who love and respect and hold up each other and help each other through life's process, then we can create a generation of world changers.
Thanks, and Doris?
I'll try not to say anything stupid too. And I have a kid back there, so she'll be like, "I can't believe you said that." I was also thrilled to see that we have a new Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion at the district, and I think is kind of a nice ride along to, you know, a newly-formed Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee here in our city. So I was proud of our city when we had stepped forward to do that work, and our community as well. I think the more that we expand our efforts in education around DEI, the stronger we get as a district and the stronger we get as a community. I'm a big quote person, and Maya Angelou is one of my all-time absolute favorite humans. But she said, "When you do the best that you can until you know better, and when you know better, then do better." And I really love that quote, especially when we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts, that when we know better and we learn more about each other and have a stronger understanding of each other and our different cultural differences, our different abilities or disabilities that may exist, that we, we become a much stronger community. I'm hoping that we get to see more teachers of color that are hired in our district, teachers who are bilingual and bicultural in our district, as well as additional training for our teachers and staff, helping to create a safer, more nurturing and welcoming environment for all of our students. And I think that's what is, this is all about, is how we create that stronger environment for our kids and do the best for them.
Great, thanks y'all. Next question, and Anita, we'll start with you, and then sort of loop around. Do you believe it's a good use of the school's budget to provide access to counseling for students expressing incipient mental illness? So when a student might be showing signs of a mental illness, but they're not yet severe or professionally diagnosed. So do you believe it's a good use of the school's budget to provide counseling for students experiencing those, those issues? And why do you think that?
We know that many of our students are struggling with many stresses these days that can lead to anxiety and depression. Teachers and counselors can alleviate a lot of these stresses, but I'd agree with that depression or mental illness, counseling should be done in school without a parent present. So if they're going to do that, they need to notify a parent to do it then, that way. This type of counseling should be done by a psychiatrist or psychologist in a private setting. If school counselors are not fully trained, they could cause more harm than good by this counseling. This is a private matter that needs to be handled by the family in a private setting and not done by a school counselor.
Thank you, Gerardo?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. I believe in our school district right now, what we're doing right now, and then knowing that the school district, sometimes they can do so much. So that's why the reason we're partnering with the Yam Hill County Health Department, and then, see, some organizations over here, we have counselors at the, all schools, all levels, to, and the staff are training to detect any sign of those symptoms too, and then we, to get to the point that we can refer, we have to refer, of course, the parent's going to know that. So, we would like to say we have all the resources to, to, to treat the kids on the heads on the, on the schools, but it's not the case. But that's why we partnered with some organizations in the community to refer them and then get the full treatment if it's needed. I believe that our school district, our staff are training, and they, they are constantly training every time they see a sign of those, those symptoms, and then we can, we can, they can do something, refer to the, the right organization to take care of that, or either it's minimal. Or either it's minimal, or at least we can recommend to the families to take it to, yeah, whatever they want to take it.
Thanks. And Audrey?
Yeah, I don't think that should be out of the question necessarily. I think high school, that's really when mental illnesses start presenting themselves, is in high school. So if they could really keep an eye, eye on that and maybe relay it to parents and have some connection with the recidivism county mental, because mental illness is a real issue, and it's putting good people into bad places. But I do believe if there is any counseling that goes on in school, it should be relayed, what is being talked about, to the parents so that they can work together on how to get the child, the student, better and healthy. Because yes, mental illness is an issue, and I think talking about it is important.
Thanks. Luann?
Yes, I think it's a good use of the district's resources to help support students. Our counselors have gone through training to become counselors. They have taken classes and continuing education classes on how to support students. And particularly during the times of COVID times, and I know this because I was the interim director of Student Services during that time. And so I know what the counselors have received in terms of training. I know counselors know the law about respecting confidentiality, and they do work really hard to engage families. But an incipient mental crisis in a child needs help right in that moment. In my first tenure at the district, I was the administrator for the Reaching Individual Students Every Day, the RISE program, which was a program for students with emotional and behavioral disorders. A child was having, who was having a mental health crisis right then and there. You had a plan. You call the parent, you call the counselor, you call the school psychologist, and we wrapped around that child and we helped that child in the moment, and then we got them the resources they need. Then when a child is in an incipient mental health crisis state, you need to act and you need to help to take care of that child, and you do need to engage the family. I totally and completely believe that. But there are certain circumstances where that may not be possible. And where that's not possible, our responsibility is still to provide for that child and to make sure that they get the care and referrals that they need to help them to be getting into a better place. Because a dysregulated child is not going to be able to learn no matter what we do unless we can help them to get regulated again. So yes, I do believe that's a good use of the district's resources.
Thank you. Todd?
So, I mean, I believe in the last few years, we've kind of seen the true effects of mental health, the crisis, especially with our kids. I mean, COVID, distance learning. I mean, that brought out true struggles in all of our kids. And finding help for that was even tougher. You know, the district, I think that they do a really good job, but unfortunately, there's a national shortage, right? I'm in the healthcare profession. We have a really tough time finding people. There's a shortage of counselors, there's a shortage of therapists. I mean, the expert here can probably tell you even more than I can. But, you know, and then if you find them, keeping them, attracting them, that gets even tougher. So I think we need to start in the schools. We need to identify that. We need to recognize it early. Because like everybody's kind of mentioned, like, once it goes, like, it goes, and it can go to bad places. So I think getting those kids help. So yes, I totally believe that it is a great use of the school budget. You know, the question just becomes how? You know, do we outsource until we find the right people? You know, kids need help, and I think all of us here are for kids. So whatever we can do to get our kids help, especially in the mental illness aspect, let's do it.
Thanks. Shelley?
I feel like I'm biased because I think therapy, everybody should spend money on therapy. There's such importance in getting mental health identified early, right? You can start early and get kids tools that they need to be able to have longevity and build resilience in their mental health, to be able to push forward, to be able to learn and do amazing things. If kids are stuck in a place where they're not getting help and they're, and they don't know how to reach out, right? And they don't know how to tell their parents, and nobody's seeing it, then they're gonna get bigger, right? Those mental health concerns are gonna get bigger. And so finding it at the root is, I mean, at the beginning, is so, so important. Most people, when they figure out that there's like a struggle, it takes them four to six years to go seek professional help, because that's how long it takes to get this big. And to be like, "I can't walk into a room without bumping into you with my mental health issues," right? So finding it early and being like, "Hey, man, I don't feel right. I don't want to get out of bed in the morning." Like, finding those things early and having more people trained and having, we already have really great connections in our schools with family and youth and with Lutheran services. Our district is already taking those steps. And so just continuing to build on what's already being built, I think. I'm in it. I'm in it.
Thanks. And Doris?
And of course, I have to follow the mental health. Sorry. This one, I will say, I might get a little emotional on this one. Absolutely, it's a good use of resources for our school district. You know, our kids, and we're seeing stats that show our kids are struggling significantly more than they used to, and especially post-pandemic. I have a kiddo that the pandemic broke her, and she lost all the things that brought her joy in school and all the things required people to be around, speech and debate, theater. And we started to see depression and anxiety coming in. And she got to the point, you know, a kid that was a student, what's the point? And I am deeply grateful for the support structures that we have in our school district that we had school counselors that were available, a principal that cared deeply and listened to us and helped connect us to the right places so that we could seek support for her. And so those support structures in our school district to, one, be catching it, two, that our kids have a safe place that they feel comfortable to go and say, "I'm really struggling. This is really hard. I need some help, and it's hard for me to ask for that," is really important. We want our kids to be in safe and nurturing and welcoming environments. And our district does a great job working on being good navigators to refer out. So we're able to refer to the experts in our community and the nonprofits that can provide those services. But we do have a shortage of them. We waited for eight months to get into the program we were looking to get into because there's that much of a shortage. So our school's becoming a really important safety net there.
Thank you. All right. And Gerardo, we're gonna start. Oh, Larry! Larry, I'm so sorry. I got deflused by my own rules. Larry, take the mic. Take it away. This is your time.
A lot of the good information's been shared, so there's no real resounding reason to sort of replow that field other than to let you know that maybe like Doris, I had a student that was stuck, too. The pandemic didn't help anything, and I sincerely believe that had the pandemic not happened, we'd have a kid that's fully functioning. So to look at the school as the only resource for mental health, I think, is foolish. But to spend nothing on it and remove students completely from that and have them seek help outside, I think is also equally foolish. So I think we need to continue to spend the money that we do and maybe even more on the types of services and supports and recognition where we can catch the students where they are, help them with their struggles, and also make sure that they understand that they have a place to belong, even though they're having a difficult time. There's a place to go to kind of unwind and settle down or reset your emotional being for a 15- or 20-minute period of time so you can get back into the classroom and connect and learn and do what you need to do. That happens as early as elementary school. To think it's a secondary problem, I think, is selling it really short because it's extremely prevalent late elementary school, all the way through middle and high school. So I think the use of resources there is probably, we don't spend enough, but we don't have enough. And compounding the problem is the availability of the professionals to do that kind of work. And in the state of Oregon, that is a tremendously underappreciated service, and there's not a lot of people in it. So the shortage of folks to provide help is, it's just, they are not there. So anything the school can do, I think, is beneficial. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Gerardo, we're gonna start with you. Bear with me here. Okay, so Oregon led the nation in giving parents the right to opt their kids out of any standardized tests. Some districts are considering adopting an opt-in procedure instead. What are your thoughts?
My opinion on this one, we should have the opt-out option for the parents. Opting, yeah, what is, basically what I see, you don't want to opt in is basically saying that you don't want to participate in that. Given the opt-out option, that's good, that's a way they can decide if they can be part of the, especially when the kids, they don't want to be part of the, I don't know, the, anything on the schools, they have the option to do that. And then that way, we eliminate the complication with the parents. Because some of the parents, they don't want the kids to see any doctor or treated because some of the reasons. But the parents have the right to say, "Okay, I don't want my kid to go to this, this treatment" or whatever, right? And then for me, that's the better option for the parents. And for the kids, too. If the kids don't feel they can, they cannot go to that, so that's a good option, too. Those options for the parents and options for the kids.
Great, thank you. Audrey?
Can I clarify? Are we talking opt-in or opt-out of standardized testing?
Yes.
Okay. So I think it should stay opt-out. We want to encourage our students to challenge themselves and to set the bar high so that they try to work towards these challenges, towards their goals. Opting in, I think, would make it too easy for people to kind of fall through the cracks of testing. And that really doesn't benefit anybody, I don't believe. I think we need to keep an eye on, you know, kind of hold students accountable and teachers and the district on how they're doing, how the students are doing. So I think opting out is a good option, so that parents don't want them to test. Good, but opting in makes it too, too likely that it's gonna get lost altogether, and then there just will be no testing.
Thank you. Luann?
My answer is I think that we should keep it with the opt-out because standardized testing has gotten a bad reputation. And I think that districts partially own that because we didn't do a good enough job of explaining why we do the testing. So we all can say it's about state mandates and so on and so forth, and that's all accurate. But really, what it also is intended to do is to help districts and, excuse me, teachers and administrators to understand the effectiveness of the instruction that's going on in the classroom. And when we have an opt, would have an opt-out option, we run the risk of not having enough students test, and then we run the risk of not having enough information and enough data to know whether or not what we're doing in the classroom is as effective as we think it is. Because without the data, we have a lot of opinions, but we don't have a lot of the facts to base it on. So parents have had the option to opt out, and I know the district here does a really good job of letting parents know. There's Parents Square, there's newsletters, there's the district's website. You can always ask which classroom teacher. So I think that keeping it that way allows the district to keep the most number of students taking the assessments. And thank goodness, a lot of the requirements from the state about participation rates and so on has kind of gone away that because, again, a district would have been in jeopardy if they didn't meet certain targets. So the state has listened to the district in that regard and removed some of those requirements. So yes, I would continue with the parents' ability to opt their child out.
Thank you. Todd?
I kind of took this one in a little bit different way, but to me, this is a tough one. Basically, from two standpoints. One, first, are teachers spending time to teach our kids or teach our kids how to take tests? Which would lead to your opt-in, opt-out thing, you know? There were times my kids would come home from school and they'd say, "What'd you do in school today?" And they would say, "Well, we're getting ready for a test we have next week." And I wondered if that teacher really enjoyed doing that. And I know my kids didn't enjoy doing it. So would I say, "Well, let's just opt out of that test"? I don't know. But secondly, the other side of it is, like everybody said, you know, we need to kind of see where we're going and what we're doing if it's working. And without some form of a testing, we really don't know if we're achieving success or if we need to improve. So I guess my answer is, I don't know. In terms of the opt-in, opt-out, you know, that's tough. And I think that's subjective and should be up to the parent, so.
Thanks. Shelley? Oh, sorry. Oh, thank you.
Hi, Shelley.
I should just look at you and say my sheet.
Opting into testing is a very interesting idea. I haven't ever heard of that. And I always thought that testing was linked to money, like coming into schools, and I'm learning that that's not true either. I didn't know that. So I would really, I would want to know what our district does, right? What does our district do with the tests? How much are we using that to inform our decisions? Or are we not using it to inform our decisions? Then why are we taking the tests, right? I would say we need to come together as a community to figure out what we're using it for, what we want to use it for, how we can help it, use it to propel us. And if it's not, then maybe we don't do that kind of test. Maybe we do something else to figure out where our kids stand. Because as you said, our kids are spending a lot of time learning how to take a test, and the teachers are spending a lot of time teaching how to take a test. When that, that time could be spent playing, like having recess and hanging out with peers. Because research shows that play is the number one indicator of brain growth. It's the thing that kids use to learn. Everybody learns better when we're in a fun environment that's very engaging. And so I've never found a test to be fun or engaging.
Doris?
Tests are fun.
I know. I'm a terrible test taker.
Unfortunately, a necessary evil sometimes. I mean, I would say an opt-out. An opt-in would concern me more, you know, parents and, and having been a recent parent of a kiddo in school, you're getting a lot of information getting sent to you via Parents Square, and you're paying attention to other details and not whether I have to opt in for my kiddo to take a test. You know, I absolutely would agree with what folks have said beforehand. You know, the focus on testing, I think it's shifted a little bit, but that being the focus that we're teaching our kids to take a test is not effective education, but we need a tool to measure. And so I really understand that we need that tool. And to make sure that we have some way to gauge, are we doing a great job teaching our kids? And how do we change or improve that or adjust it so that our kids are more successful? And I think our schools are doing a great job with that. And I will say, when we moved to McMenbo, my daughter was in the seventh grade. And I remember our first curriculum night. One, Larry was there. It was the first time I'd ever seen a school board member at a curriculum night, which was awesome. But when our math teacher was talking about the state testing, and she said, "Your parents worry about that a lot." But we work with our kiddos to meet each individual student where they're at and to support those kids to be successful and to not stress out about the test and to just do the best that they can. And I thought that was such a beautiful way of describing it, that yes, we want to be able to measure how our kids are doing and are we effective in our teaching, but we don't want the kids to be stressed out about that. And so we're gonna meet them where they are to help them be successful. And so I think that's a good approach from our district.
Thank you. Larry?
I think the evolution of standardized testing and the way information is reviewed and calculated is really the thing that needs to be considered here because I think we've all done, and everybody in this room that's been to a public school has done standardized testing, and everybody has loved it, I have no doubt. So, but what it does do with this district and every other is it provides a benchmark within the state so you can compare how well you're doing, not only with other districts, but with average of the state. Are you improving? Are you going up? Are you going down? It provides a benchmark of data, and in this district, we are data-driven to make decisions. We don't make decisions because they feel good or because they're convenient or they're cheap. We make decisions that make impacts for kids, period. Do state tests make impacts for kids? No, but they inform what the district does with its instruction to make those improvements over time. And for those of you that have ever taken a look in the newspaper or anything like that, our district consistently outperforms the state in nearly every measure. So that data is used. I think if you opt in, no one's gonna take the test, therefore, there's no data to measure. So how are you gonna know what you're doing is working or is not working? You know, is it how you feel? You know, is it how you feel? Are the kids having fun? That's great if the state wants to continue to pay us for that. Because most of our funding does come from the state. But I don't think they're going to take our word for it. So the reality is, we have to do something. I think the opt-out is working for the parents, if they choose not to have their student participate. But the information is incredibly valuable to the district and is being used to inform what we do, not just today, but tomorrow.
Thanks. Anita?
We definitely need to have a way to know if our instruction is coming across, if the students are learning. And there has to be a way to gauge how our education is coming forth, where areas that students aren't understanding, what areas need to be reinforced. We definitely need to have some sort of assessment to know which areas we need to improve. But I've been in the testing environment, and it is stressful. Students are so stressed, and a lot of times, they don't know how to test. So we teach them how to test, and that creates a lot more stress. So if we could find a way to do assessments to find out the areas that we're doing well and the areas we need to improve in a better format, I think that would be great. But we need to have some sort of assessment to know how we're doing. And at this point, this is what we have. And so we have to move forward with that. And I feel bad when I hear that parents don't want to have their students test. Because we all need to know how our students are doing, how our children are doing. So we have to have some sort of assessment. So I think opting out, if they don't want to take the test. But I think we need to educate the parents to understand what this assessment is for, this wonderful, valuable tool that we can use to better our education system. I think that is the key here.
Great, thanks, y'all. So now we will start with you, Audrey. And the question is, "The ability to walk, bike, and roll to school and throughout neighborhoods not only benefits students and families, but the entire community. Tell us about steps you'd take to make sure students and families can choose safe, convenient, and active transportation to and from school."
Okay, I don't really know much about the steps I would take. Perhaps providing a map for students on the best routes, the safest routes from the schools in the certain neighborhoods. And ensure that there's proper places to lock up their bikes and their wheels. But as far as steps, I'm not sure. I'd have to do more research and get more of other people's ideas to kind of collaborate on that one.
Thank you. Luann?
So, thank you. I was just rereading, we're reading off the questions that came to us in the mail. Because, okay. So I think, I have a couple of ideas about this. So the first one is, I think we need to be able to partner with the city, Parks and Rec and the city of McMinnville. Because we need to be able to, first of all, have safe access on our roads, which means the roads have to be safe. I think Park and Rec could do a good job of doing bicycle classes to train. The fire department used to hand out bicycle helmets and do safety checks for helmets and that. So I think it's a collective effort to bring those types of things from a community. Our community supports our schools tremendously in many different ways. So if we want to have safe routes to kids to get to school using bikes or their scooters, then I think we need to have that partnership so that we're doing it together. And then everybody in the community has the same expectations around what it is to have a child be safe going to and from school. And then when they're at the school, you know, reinforcement classes or after-school activities. I know we don't have kids on the block anymore, but we do have a company that is providing after-school support. So maybe it's also, again, a partnership with the city around providing classes and ongoing training for students. And then just overall safety. You know, when I learned how to ride a bike, I got a little handbook thing, you know, and said, you know, how to use my hand signal. So maybe that's how, you know, a very basic step. But I think there are ways to partner with those in the community to make this a viable option and a safe option for our children.
Thanks. Todd?
Can you imagine as a parent or a grandparent not having to wait and drop off or pick up an adolescent elementary schools or high school? I mean, how amazing would that be? I mean, come on. I mean, nothing better than that could happen. You know, I think the things that bind us are kind of what Luann mentioned, but, you know, we got to look at, you know, location, distance plays a factor in that, you know? Are we able to provide safe routes? What about 99W? Are we providing crosswalk safety or things like that? How far away do the schools live? You know? And the other thing, unfortunately, in this community is, you know, and I'll be dead honest with you, is like, are the homeless individuals, are they impeding or causing safety concerns for our students? It's a problem. And I think the only way to do that and come up with the steps is you got to work collaboratively. You got to look with the local law enforcement. I work with the district, the city council. And gosh, you can get the input from Cycle Yamhill County, who asked this question, and other community members. You know, and just come up with a plan if we want this to become a reality.
Thanks. Shelley?
I agree with all that. I think, first of all, I love the term "active transportation." That's just an amazing term. But the things I had were, yeah, provide access to safety gear, the reflective and helmets and all the things. Have more spaces for kids to actually park their things when they get to school. Because if they're wearing skates, those are kind of big. If they have a bike, right, now we need a bike lock. And we need lots of spaces if we have a school of, I don't know, 300 kids or more, most of the time, riding their bike or, you know, we need space for that stuff. And I think collaborating with Yamhill Cycle, right, Cycle Yamhill, I said that backwards, to provide maybe those safety classes would be amazing. Maybe even at school, right? We could have a day where they come and they do, I don't know, something. My other idea, which I'm very excited about this one, is to do a wheels drive, like a wheel swap, kind of like they do a cleat swap, right, at Parks and Rec, where everybody brings their bike or their things. Because how much stuff do you have in your house that you would like to get out of your house? We have a lot. If we could all bring that to one place, and then we could be like, oh, this is your size bike, and this is your size bike. I think that would be amazing. So, I mean, if nothing else, I might make that happen.
Thank you. Doris?
I just donated several bikes.
Should have saved it for my swap.
I love this one, because when we moved here, it was the first time my kiddo could actually ride her bike to school safely. Because she couldn't do that in Springfield, because they had to cross a freeway where people ran the red lights pretty frequently. I served on the Lane Transit District Board down in Lane County for six years. And we had an amazing safe routes to school program. And it was a collaboration between folks that were passionate about biking, the Transit District, the School District, the cities, in both Eugene and Springfield. They had what was called a "school pool" program, which I think would be a really cool thing for us to look at here, where you connect families, so it's almost like if you were carpool, but you connect families that would then bike together. And/or parents could take turns biking with their kiddos to school. So that as you've developed those maps and safe routes to school in partnership with our city and/or partnership with the Transit District, that you've also created these little interconnected groups of folks that can bike together to school or walk to school together. I think also, looking at, and the program looked at equity, engagement, education, encouragement, engineering, and then of course, evaluation, so that you were constantly retooling those programs for the school. There was bike safety education, as well as pedestrian safety education, and helped create and coordinate events and programs around biking. So I think an incredible opportunity to partner with Yamhill County Cycling, to be able to do some of these training classes, to maybe create these opportunities to get the maps in our schools. Because I think it's an awesome opportunity for our kids to be active and engaged in nature and healthy and be able to ride your bikes to school.
Great. And throwing it down to Larry?
I think this is a great idea in general, to promote health and to promote activity for kids and that kind of stuff. I'm going to echo what many have said. At this point, it would need to be a collaborative effort between the School District, the city, and the county, and/or the city of Lafayette as well, because we have a school there. Because not all schools and not all neighborhoods have the right amount of safety, sidewalks, crosswalks, those kind of things, where certainly the youngest of kids would have the ability to do it in a safe and responsible manner. I think it would require some of that investment. I'm not saying it wouldn't come from the district, but it would, it's, we can't repay the city street and make them put sidewalks where they aren't. So we need help with that. I think, I think it's a great idea. I think it promotes the health, like I mentioned earlier. And I guess I'm going to enlist everybody in this room who happens to be a lobbyist to take this to the state. Because right now, if we could offset this with the amount of requirements that they are bringing into us for how much, how many minutes of P E per week we are required to provide our kids, if we provide them, if this is a way to offset some of those things, we could have more classroom time to do other stuff. Right now, we have to take away classroom time so they have P E time, whether that's reading, writing, math, any of those other things, because of the state mandate. So those of you that are lobbyists, go explain that to the folks in Salem. They'd love to hear it.
Anita?
I love the idea of encouraging students to ride, walk, or roll into school. I think it's a great time to think about things, processing time. Because when we were younger, we used to do that. And it was really beneficial when we had things out our mind, that we had time to really think about it. And by the time we got home, we kind of figured out the issues that we had. So for that reason, I love it. I love it for the exercise. I love it for the fresh air. And everybody already had said all the benefits of this. But I think what we really would need is to educate our students on the safety use of streets. So know which side to be on in a bike, going with traffic, not against traffic. Because my husband drives a big truck, and he says he can not see the students when they come zipping by the wrong way, when he's trying to turn. So educating in street safety is really important. And encouraging that as often as we can, I think, would be a huge benefit. We do need some, either blinking lights at crosswalks, because if we're going to have more students on the street, we need to have some safety precautions in place. So that way, students aren't almost invisible if there's no streetlights or if there's no blinking lights. I have helped with crosswalk duty in the morning, and I have seen safety concerns myself as I was trying to help kids cross the street. So a few things would need to be updated or improved. And definitely, it would be a good time to bring in a police officer to showcase what are the safety areas that they should be concerned about. And also, that would be a good time for the district to send out notifications to the community. That would be a really good way to reach out to the community and to showcase what it is that we need from you. And just to get that started, I think would be wonderful.
Thanks. And Hernando?
Yeah, I love it. Myself, I love the idea, biking, walking, and riding. I was used to my, in my time, for about 10 years. I was used to bike and walk about 10 miles every single day. So it was, it was great. I enjoyed. But the most important thing over here, right now, the most important thing we can do is sit down with the city. I mean, you see, I don't know, most of you see, some of the, at least in my area, some of the sidewalk, the trees are put in the concrete. And the first thing we have to do that, be sure the sidewalk and the road that the kids used to go to school and coming back, that are safe. And after that, of course, we're going to be talking about training, educating the community to be sure that they're safe. But first thing we have to do is figure out with the city what we're going to do on the sidewalk. There is a lot of things that you see in the city, there is a lot of things we have to be fixed. And if we don't do that, how do we want to receive education? We can do that, figure out what to do, and then go to the next step. That's the first thing we have to do. And I love the idea, it's good for the kids.
Great. Thanks, y'all. Luann, we'll start with you. "Do you believe that the McMinnville School District provides adequate resources for substance abuse counseling? Could those resources be improved, and if so, how?"
I think that the, I think the district has taken really strong steps to address this concern. They have the Family Resource Center now, and David Kano is the leader there. And he is a licensed mental health therapist and drug and alcohol counselor. And so, and I know he has a partner there. When I first worked for the district, we didn't have such a facility or a person in that position. So I think the district has taken a really strong step to address that. One of the things that David talked about at a parent-teacher meeting that I attended last week is that he is now able to provide some onsite counseling to students. So that when we were talking earlier about the lack of mental health resources, because we don't have enough personnel and that the county resources are maxed out, as Shelley has mentioned and others, now we have an in-district person that can take on some of that counseling for students, that they are not missing out as much school as they might to travel to an outside professional to take care of them. I think that the district, having initiated that and putting it in place, will probably, I would hope, look to expand those services for students so that they're not missing as much class time. And also, that is working to, I think, help to keep the student connected to the school. Because when you have to leave school to go to a counselor, and you have downtime when you're traveling, you have downtime coming back, you're also having the after-effects of the counseling session that you've had. When you have somebody in district and you're close to proximity to your classes and your teachers and your friends, I think it makes it a lot better for the students. So I'm definitely in support of that.
Thank you. Todd?
So this is one I'm like, I'm not 100% sure about, but I'd be willing to guess that the answer is no, that we don't have adequate resources for substance abuse counseling. I mean, I don't know if any of you just saw in the Oregonian recently, the study that just came out that said Oregon, we're in top three in substance abuse in the nation, in addiction. And we are one of the three lowest in the nation in treatment of that. So could they be improved? Absolutely. But unfortunately or fortunately, I think that starts at the state level. I mean, it starts with representatives, it starts with our governor allocating money for this. And basically, at the local level, we have some great resources here. We have drug and alcohol counseling through the county health department. We also have organizations such as Provoking Hope that help out with that as well. But yeah, like everything else in healthcare and mental health, we're short and we're out of money. So, that's it.
Thanks. Shelley?
So I do know that our school district partners with Yamhill County Family Youth, right, for drug and alcohol counseling, as well as Lutheran. And I was so excited to see that David Kano was in our school district now as the Student and Family Engagement Director. He's so good with families, and he's so good with students. The way he connects with a student who is needing drug and alcohol counseling is just, it's incredible to watch. Like he, man, he makes connections with kids really fast. And is able to show them, hey, what you're doing is stupid. He'll tell them that. What are you doing? You're supposed to be in class. That's not what you're, you know, like, he re-engages kids into classrooms in such a way, it's amazing. This is not about David, but I just wanted to say that. The school district is really lucky to have him. So I think that everything can always be improved, right? And one step I would love to see is creating cultures of connection and community. You'll hear me say this over and over. But friends who have friends, don't let friends do dumb things most of the time, right? If you're a connected person, then you can talk to somebody about the issues that are going on, rather than going to the bottle or going to, right, alcohol or weed or whatever you want, right? You have connections, you can talk through things, you have a support system built in. So when we can create a support system within our schools, we'll see a reduction in the need for counseling.
Thank you. Doris?
Can I hate these mental health questions after that? But I would say, I mean, the Student Resource Center, and I got to know, and I don't know if I'm saying this, if it's David or David, he is spectacular. And the fact that we've got him in our district, and especially in our high school, is amazing. And I would agree, we need more resources. And unfortunately, resources cost money. So, you know, I think that that's certainly needing to be addressed at a state level. Knowing what our stats look like, knowing more of our kids are running into these issues. Having that availability... having that availability and support in our schools critically important, and how do we look at what are our opportunities to partner more? So again, Lutheran Family Services with the county, who has been a great partner, and especially, you know, county health was an incredible partner through the pandemic in providing extra access and support for kiddos, knowing that they were going to be facing additional issues or significantly higher issues. And I, I, you know, again, I think it is, there is such a shortage in mental health. You know, as I mentioned, I, we waited eight months to get access to counseling and a coaching program. And, and I can, and I know that those wait lists are even longer for kiddos that have substance abuse issues and are needing that level of care. So I think the more we can partner and support, and I think also the state needs to, we need more funding to support our school districts to have these in them, because I think it's going to become even more a critical issue as we move forward.
Thank you. Larry?
Yeah, I think a lot of the, what, what you've heard is, is right on the money. Many of our, our, our needs in our district are, go unmet. And they're not unmet because we don't see them, they're unmet because we don't have the staff or the, the resources to be able to provide the support to the students that need them. David is obviously great, as everybody says, but can you imagine just having, for those of you that actually are licensed in doing this kind of work, you know, we have 2,100 kids at our high school, how many people want a caseload of 2,100 kids? Right? Yeah, so, so the reality is, is do we do an adequate job? I think we do the best we can with what we have. Resources are really the key, and for those of you at, at NAMI that study statistics and things like that, you're going to be able to look at charts and find out how mental health and drug and alcohol stuff are actually funded in the state of Oregon and where the state of Oregon ranks nationally. And I can tell you, we're half a step up from the very bottom. So it is abysmal here, and the resources that we have are, are not enough, nor the money we spend on it. So I think at the very, very highest level of the state, we have to look at how important is, is this issue to our citizens that live within our, within our borders? And how much are we willing to spend and pay the people that need to help us do this work, this important work? How much are we willing to invest in that to make it better? It's really, 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 the school is going to be an extension of what the state spends, and we're going to get some portion of that for our own internal work, and, but how much is the state going to support that? Because it, we are a public enterprise.
Thank you. Anita?
Well, a lot has been said already, and we know that when students turn to alcohol or drug abuse or anything, that is because they're lacking something internally. So the more we can build students up, listen to students, engage with them, get to know what their family life is like, and find out what could be causing that distraction, I think the better that we will get in being able to prevent a lot of this stuff from happening. So I truly support, the more teachers can get to know the students, assistants working with the students that may have different languages at home or different needs, that one-on-one, really getting to know our students will help prevent some of these issues. Trying to connect students to other students that may be dealing with similar stuff, create friendships, and create communities, I think will also help. So I think that we definitely need a lot more supports to help prevent it from happening so that way we wouldn't need to spend as much money to stop it from happening. So if we can prevent it beforehand, I think that would be very beneficial.
Thank you. Gerardo?
Yeah, everybody says, what I'm going to say right now. No, but what he is, yeah, really, the truth is, it really is, it is an important subject. My son, he was, my son, he was facing some of the issues too, but, but he, he, they need to listen to somebody. I agree with Larry and everybody else that when David Kano came in to be part of the Resource Center, I was talking to him and said, you know what, let's do this, this and this. He was really a great addition to the school district. And really, really, one of the things that I, I believe, the kids, they have to have some, somebody to trust in the, in our district so that we can communicate, they talk to them, but it's really, on, on what's called, this, we can do so much with the resources we have. But again, I keep saying that, that's a good idea to partner with some of the local, the Yumme County, or some of the, the people around the city that can support, because we know for sure that we can do so much. That's why we have to have a team with the rest of the partners in the community.
Thank you. And Audrey?
Yes, I think it's a great idea to be, have that option to go to a counselor, to talk about actual substance abuses, but we also need to be having these conversations with high schoolers just about drug and alcohol in general, because not only children have students that have abuses will use these things, people that are just, kids are testing things at this age. And so we need to have these conversations about how serious it is right now, and that they may take what they think is weed and they may die immediately because it's fentanyl. So it's not just kids that are just like having abuse, substance abuse, but also they're just testing it out, oh, let me try this, let me try that. Those are good kids too, they're just testing. So we need to have these conversations with these high schoolers about how serious it is right now, and like you said, it is a legislative issue where the state of Oregon has legalized pretty much every drug, which is not a good role model for children. But we need to have these conversations and talk about with them, I think collaborating with the, the county is great too. But definitely just informing kids that you have to be really careful on what you're getting into these days, because it's like one and done. And that's really frightening for students and parents. And so I think having these conversations in the school is important and just realizing it is serious stuff, and they need to just be careful.
All right, thanks y'all. And Todd, we'll start this question with you. McMinnville's Latino population is the youngest and fastest growing demographic. Latino students compromise 35% of the student body, but achievement gaps exist between these students and the rest of their peers at school. What are your ideas for closing achievement gaps for Latino students?
Great. Well, historically, I believe, if you look at the numbers, I think our Latino population has achieved some of the higher graduation rates in the state. Is that true? You know?
It is true.
Bravo. I mean, we've done a great job as a district. You don't want to reinvent the wheel, right? Like, let's continue to build on that success, you know, by just listening to the parents, listen to PTA groups and those teaching, and find out where we can help. You know, at the end of the day, it's our goal to get all those kids across the graduation stage with skills to help them achieve whatever comes next in their lives. And again, bravo to the district.
Well, I have four of those Latino children living in my home. So when you're growing up as a bilingual student, you're, you're learning two languages, right? Things in two languages, things are coming at you a lot faster, and so there is a, a learning gap really early in, in early childhood. And then as they grow older in high school and college and beyond, they tend to soar above because they have, they're learning things at a different, in a different way. It unlocks something in their brain. It's, it's kind of amazing. So I would love to see dual language programs in our, in our district, just immersion programs, truly immersion programs, where they are learning both languages at the same time, they are learning subjects in both languages, they are getting just immersed, right? That's the word for it, immersed. Our first born was going to a dual immersion program in Salem and loved it. We loved that program. And then when we came here, we tried to find an immersion program, and we were told the newbie had one, and we were really excited, and we found out that it was English as a second language, which is different because that's Spanish speakers trying to learn English, which is not, it's not that full immersion. So I would love to see, I think our graduation rates and our, that gap would be so closed if we did immersion programs. I think it would be awesome to see different elementary schools doing different languages, like have a Spanish one and have a Chinese one and have a French one. I don't know. I'm dreaming big here, so come on with me.
Thank you. Doris?
So it is true that McMinnville School District has the highest graduation rates for Latino students in the state of Oregon, which is really impressive, having years ago done work around how do we close that achievement gap in Springfield and Eugene school districts? And, and it's, it's a tough hill to get over, and so our district has done a pretty exceptional job on that level. But of course, you can always build on that success and improve outcomes for our Latino students, and improve those outcomes at earlier ages as well, so that they are progressing more easily through the grades. I think meeting our kids and our families where they are and partnering with organizations like Unidos to connect with the Latino community in culturally appropriate ways is probably a really good starting point. I understand that there were a number of ideas that were shared with the district when we were formulating Student Success Act plans, where the Latino families had come together and had a whole bunch of ideas around what might be helpful for our students to be more successful. Things like more bilingual, bicultural teachers in our district, more after-school tutoring, affordable extracurricular activities for families, helping more with college applications and scholarship applications and F A S A. And I know our district does an amazing job with that, but I think opportunities to listen to those families and ideas that they had and, and how we might implement those and continue to improve on our great success already.
Thank you. Larry?
As you've heard, certainly with the Latino population, which if you look across the spectrum of students we have, within, within the McMinnville School District represents around 32 or 33% ballpark of our, of our, what we would call focal populations, and that would include whether it's English language learners, special ed, those, those, those types of things. So we do have a program here that is truly, truly the best in the state. We are telling everybody how to do it, and they say, well, how can you spend the money and do those things? Well, it has to be, it has to be important to the district. We have to make sure that we focus on the things that are important to all of our students, and that includes some of our underserved populations or focal populations, whether it be special ed, English language learners. You have to invest in those programs to grow the students' ability to learn. And does that mean it's coming at, at the cost of something else? In this instance, not really. We train our staff really well, we train them top to bottom, and we're using research-based practices that are from, from the best scholars around. We're not guessing how to do this, we're focusing on doing it the same way pre-K through 12. And again, the results are, are, are very, 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 very good. So the fact that we're that way, it means that we're spending the money to do exactly this thing and train the people to do exactly the way we want to, which will be a success for our kids. So I, I think we do it well. I think we can always improve, but it's not going to get better unless you spend the money and time and energy to focus on it to improve.
Thank you. Anita?
I think, as already been mentioned, the district has done a great job helping with non-English speakers, having programs that targets the lagging skills that are found in non-English speakers. I know that because I am a non-English speaker. And so there are certain areas that just are not learned in the home. And so you absolutely need a program that will target those areas to provide the skills and the, the education that is needed to allow the students to get to grade level and above, to encourage that. Getting to know the students and where they are needing skills is absolutely important, and then providing those programs, whether it is for non-English speakers or any other program, we need to know where the lagging skills are and to be able to teach it in a way that they can understand and they could be successful from that. That will encourage confidence, that will encourage students to get involved in different programs and different, different involvement in the school, broaden their horizons, allow for more career choices in the future, and will make wonderful citizens of our students.
Thank you. Gerardo?
Okay, I move on to my maybe on 2005, and one of the first person I, I met was the, the, the person who was working with the Latino population. And on that time, we started with the, yes, the Hispanic Parents Committee, and then the, because they were, the district saw that the, that we need to recruit or engage or involve the Latino families. 2005 was, and then that's when I met Christian too, from, he's still working in high school. And they make the difference. When somebody is, is in a position with a long period of time, the results aren't going to come later. So on that time, it was the graduation rate for the Latino population was about 70% or 60% or 70%. Now, we're talking about 90% if I'm correct. So it make, make, make the difference right there. So it, 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 trying to, to bring the family, that's, that's going to close the gap. Right now, one of the things that was here, and I'm going to be fighting for that all the time, so to close the gap on the staff. So if the population, Latino population is about 35%, I would like to see the staff show 35%. So that, for, for fact, the data showed us that if the, the student sees somebody, he looks at them, they're going to learn better. So that's, we're going to, we're getting there. And in the proof is right now with the new superintendent, we're closing that gap little way. It's complicated because we need some more qualified staff to take the position, but we're going in a really good direction.
Thank you. Audrey?
Yes, I think this district has done a good job at, at a young age with immersion programs to get them all, to get them to speak English and be on the same page so they can learn at the rate that they deserve to. And I think once that gap is closed with the language barriers and maybe bringing in the family a little more so that at home, they, they can all kind of collaborate together. I mean, once you get past that language barrier, I think that definitely they can, I mean, just achieve greatness, just like anybody else. Because they're great, we're all great.
Thank you. Luann?
I'm just going to restate some of the things that you've already heard. I think that one of the things that the district has done really well is the consistency and the leadership for our English language learner and migrant program, and also the consistency of staff in each of the building. There's not been a tremendous turnover in those teachers who teach English language development and the other, so we have systems in place in the district that have made the successes that we see in the graduation rates and that. And then the other part is, I think that with Gerardo's leadership to engage the Hispanic community and create the Hispanic PTA, that offered those families a, a, a place for them to meet where they would be able to talk specifically about their concerns, and then how do we engage with the families and understanding that a family, family is important to all of us, but culturally, there's, there's differences. And so how do we help the families to, to meet them where they're at and to help them bring their students? The other thing to systemically back to, is I know the professional development has been provided to general ed teachers on instructional strategies to work with children who are second language learners so that they have the ability to learn in the classroom, even though their first language may be Spanish or, or Italian or, you know, Chinese. So I think the, the systems are in place, but as with everything we've talked about so far, there's always the ability to do better. So we're not going to say that 90% graduation is the top we want. We want 100%. We want all of our children, regardless of their ethnicity, to be able, or second language status, to get across the stage.
Great, thanks. Todd? Did we already start with you?
You want me to say it again?
Do over, all right? I'm on mute.
We have time to close the question.
Okay, great. So we'll do one last question, and it's a simple one, but the answers will be very important. Still two-minute limit? Right, Adam? Okay. Which is, why should a voter elect you over anybody else? And Shelley, you start.
Because I'm awesome. I mean, I just want to be a part of the team, right? I feel like I have skills, not that nobody else has, obviously, but skills that can be a great asset to the school board team. I'm very open to ideas. I love hearing people's ideas and collaborating and figure, throwing big ideas, right, up on the wall and being like, what's actually going to stick? And coming, like, coming together, right? I'm, I'm about community, and I, man, I use my community a lot. And so- And so just pulling on everybody, whether you be teachers, staff, parents, students, like collaborating together, collaborate together, yeah. I really wanna force that word, really, to come up with a great, a great school system, right? We have an awesome school district, as you've heard already. We are doing great things in the state, but I think that together, we can create even bigger and better things.
Thank you. Doris?
Well, I care deeply about our kids, and while I got my last one graduated last year, I wanna make sure that the kids that are coming behind my kids have the incredible school district that my kids had access to, that our kids deserve the best from us as a community. I know when we were doing our school bond, one of the taglines was, "Strong schools create strong communities." And I wanna be a part of the team that is working to create our strong schools, and thus making our community stronger and bringing us together. I bring, as I mentioned, you know, in my introduction, I bring more than 20 years of experience in work of collaboration in a community around what are systemic issues? How do we get upstream? Helping our kids to be successful, and especially our most vulnerable kiddos to be successful, not just in school, but in life. I have experience managing budgets, having served on a public board down in Eugene. I had the good fortune to learn how to oversee $181 million budget, so one that's larger than our school district, very complex, to advocate for funding for projects that were priorities. And so I really wanna bring my professional experience forward to support the work that our school district has been doing, and to be a good collaborator and partner in that work. And again, I wanna see our schools stay the best, and that our kids get the best from us in this community.
Thank you. Larry?
Thank you. I've been doing this for quite a while, and that doesn't entitle me to a position like this. It just gives me a perspective that can think back of when I started, and this was not the district that people wanted to be in. It was not the place where we could even get people to apply for a teaching or administrative position, because we were too far outside the metro area. It took a lot of change in our internal culture, it took a lot of change in how we did things in this district that truly, truly makes a difference for children, that took us from being a below-average district 15, 18 years ago, to an above-average district now, and that happens with small footsteps, all going in the right direction. I think for this community, I provide a level of stability and experience, kind of like the keel to a ship that doesn't move, it's always heading in the same direction, and knowing how we got to where we are, and what really works and what really doesn't, I think is hugely important. Experience really matters in this job, and being able to understand where you are and where you were, and what those specific changes that happened within this community, within this school district, that made the difference, is really, really important to this community. I thank you for putting this on, I thank you for inviting everybody here to talk about this, and I'm still willing to serve.
Thank you. Anita?
I want everyone to know that I care about students, I care about everyone's heart. I wanna make sure everybody feels successful. I came from a culture that we did not speak English. English was not encouraged at home. I came from that and was able to try a lot of different things through school, through different jobs, and I've been successful. I was able to manage a business, doing all kinds of different behind-the-scenes and different jobs within my lifespan. So I understand students feeling isolated. I don't want any student to feel alone and not have anybody to talk to. So I am so in full support of making sure people feel included in every aspect. I know that some students will struggle with different things, and I understand struggles. So I am that person that can unite with a student and just be able to have a one-on-one conversation, so that way I can fully support and make them feel special, and make them feel like they can do it. So I want you to know that I'm a team player. I wanna make sure that we all work cohesively together, so that way we could make the most great choices in the school board, so that way we can have great curriculum and great school culture. And I wanna thank everybody for coming, thank you for watching online, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Peraldo?
Thank you. Yes, I just wanna say that with the experience I have in the school district, I've been connected enough that I see, I decide to the voters to decide who's gonna represent your school district, and then the only thing I can say is that I love to do this. And one other thing, you have to be sure, what, do you like this or not? Do you love kids? Do you like to make a difference on them? And the passion is, like I said before, the passion started doing this when I was eight years old about. So one of the things, you have to focus on the benefit to the kids, and then you have to love it, and then do a difference when you're working with the school district. And then with my experience, I believe I have enough to support the school district, and then have a benefit for all the students. And then, of course, like everybody over here, they see the board is gonna decide who is gonna represent you on the school district, and then good luck, and then thank you so much for everybody's coming.
Thank you. Audrey?
I believe in McMinnville School District, and I believe in kids, and I really am passionate about all kids and just their happiness and their health, and I may not have experience, but I am a fast learner, I'm a hard worker, and I realize there's a lot of really great board members that will still be there, and I would love to, you know, even if you weren't there, Larry, I'd probably still call you with lots of questions. I just am really willing to work, and I am huge on listening to all sides of every issue, because I know there's issues that come along, and we have to find ways to work together, because the children are watching, this is all about the kids. We have to respect one another, and be kind to one another, and set a good example, because that's what they're watching. And I just really wanna be part of the community, and for my kids, the school district, and all kids in it, and see that they can continue the success that the district has done for the schools. And so I just wanna volunteer my time and be part of it. And I appreciate you putting this on and having us, and thank you for any support I may have.
Thank you. Luann?
So I didn't go to college until I was in my mid-30s, and I became a teacher as a result of that experience. So I've spent the last 35 years of my career in schools in one way, shape, or another. I've worked with children who experienced disabilities, I've worked with children who have had extreme mental health needs, and to, not to sound trite, but I am passionate about children, and those of you in the room who have worked with me know that, and know that my heart is there. The other is, I bring, I'm a unique candidate in that I have actual lived experience as an instructional assistant, as a teacher, as a district and building-level administrator, and I also taught at university. The other thing is, I also have experiences being a board member. I did serve the Yamo Carlton School Community for seven years as a board member there. So I bring a wealth of background of educational experience that, as a board member, I think is really valuable, because I know what the work is like from the other side of the conversation, and I feel like that is a valuable component to being a board member. My learning curve will be not quite as steep, but it will certainly be there, because things have changed in the last two years since I retired from McMinnville School District. So I really want to work on behalf of children, I wanna share my expertise with the colleagues that will be with me on the board, I want to be able to feel that I've used what I've been given in terms of my skills to the benefit of my community, and most importantly, to the benefit of the children in our community. And thank you for hosting tonight.
Thank you. Todd?
So as a school board member, you have to basically take input from everybody. You have to take it from the taxpayers, the students, the teachers, and everything else, and, you know, that's one of my greatest strengths. You know, I call myself an expert listener, and I think too many times what's happening today is we're listening to react instead of listening to understand. It would go a long way, wouldn't it? You know, if we've really got the time to spend with each other, sit down and figure out where we're coming from, you know? To sit a group collaboratively and work together to do what's best for kids. I'm so invested in this community. Like I said, my family's been here for generations, and this has been a fantastic place to raise kids, have a family, and I'm crossing my fingers that one of my kids comes back to live here, but I'm not sure if that's gonna happen yet. And, you know, I'm all in. I wanna thank you. I hope my son's watching, I hope I didn't say anything really stupid. If I did, I'm sorry, buddy. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And thanks to the sponsors, thanks to this patient and lovely audience. I think that's it. Y'all survived.
Woo!